All this meeting to order. Confirmation of the agenda.
That council adopts the agenda for the meeting of April 2, 2025.
Move in second, Deputy Mayor Barber and Consulor Chapman. All those in favor. That is Kerry, thank you. I skip moment of reflection and respect, we'll do that now. Item four, is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? Seeing none. Item five, delegations and public meetings, now at 5.1. Cam Thompson presenting regarding the Elmer Evangelical Missionary Church 125th anniversary. Cam, approach the podium. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Cam Thompson, and I wanted to thank the mayor and the councils to, for this opportunity to share a bit about our 125th anniversary that's coming up this month. Our 125th anniversary gives us an opportunity to celebrate as we reflect and rejoice, dare I say brag, just a little bit about our church. This presentation provides the window into the life of AEMC, Elmer Evangelical Missionary Church. Please know each of you are welcome to come and see for yourselves firsthand what we are all about. Back on April 13th in the year of 1900 is the first recognized date of the original church. The gospel mission was established with services in the auditorium over top of what is now Spicer's Bakery. Shortly after, the congregation moved across the road to a building that they bought that is now the Bella Boutique. And then, short time after that, they built a new church in 1955 at the corner of Elm and Oak Streets, which we eventually outgrew as well. So in 1990, we built a new building on the corner of Rogers Road and Talbot Street and moved in there. And we took with us some long-term members. Anne Fair from town here has been a member of this congregation for 85-plus years. Esther Wiley has also been there for 70-plus years. So we have a long history with people in the town. Some characteristics of our church. We focus a lot on missions, family-oriented and benevolence. Primary commitment to community and more significantly worldwide support through people and funds. As a local and autonomous church, we are a member of the Evangelical Missionary Church of Canada. What surprises most people in our church is that we have a policy slash guideline to allocate 20% of our budget, yearly budget, to go to missions. Some years we are above, some years we are below that, but the significant commitment remains hallmark for, or remains a hallmark for AEMC. Supported our missions allocations is a very well-known, is our very own home-based missionary Dorothy Reed of the Reed family that's been living on Myrtle Street for a long time. She continues to serve in Romania, and I believe she's been there 20-plus years now. We also had a couple, a few years back, that he retired from teaching, she retired from nursing, and they ended up in Ethiopia for about sixty, six years, I believe. And now they've also retired from there and live in Kitchener, but we, we sent them out from our church. Other characteristics is multi-generational families at our church, attending from all across Elgin and some coming in from adjoining counties. Several families have three generations. Mine is one of them, the Wiley family, Pete Wall's family, Kirk Ali's family, all have three generations attending this church at this time. Last year, our congregation played a significant role in helping a Congolese family arrive under a federal government refugee sponsorship agreement and settle in this area. A journey that they started many years ago in Congo, Africa, and then for over 20 years of living in tents at a refugee camp in Kenya, this group of seven, family of six and an aunt, are now settled in, into new life in London area. The family, since they've been here, is now expecting their fifth child. They have four boys, number five boy is on his way. We are having a shower for them next Thursday, actually. So we hope everything goes well for them. She's due, I think, early May. My wife and I also hosted this family when they first got here last July while we looked for a home for them to live in. As you can well imagine what an experience that would be bringing somebody here from Africa. They don't know our food, they don't know our culture very well, they don't know, he doesn't drive, he just doesn't understand a lot of things. So the things we had to get used to, to the things they had to get used to or start to learn that they can't get everything they had there. It's a whole different system here. So they are adjusting, still adjusting to that, they're taking English classes and all that in London. We also support humanitarian relief or charitable needs within our community. Council members will be well aware of just how great these local needs are. To highlight a few, 2023 Talbot Street East Fire, our elders responded immediately with a check to assist the families that were displaced with $10,000. We also gave regularly to the Family Central, the East Elgin Community Assist Program, and the Christmas Care Hamper Program, and found it possible to provide a $50,000 gift to the Elgin hospice being built in St. Thomas. Now a bit about the church itself. Our Sunday worship service is well-attended and provides a live YouTube stream if you ever want to watch it on a Sunday morning. It's, we start at, at nine forty, or 10:45 is church start. We are blessed with extraordinary musical and preaching talents. It is no surprise that we also have three members that have provided piano lessons, violin, guitar lessons to many folks in this community for a long time. We have deep strength in our worship teams and ministry leadership ensures we have regular talent nights, Christmas programs and concerts. It has been our joy to host the public and other communities churches to special programs when asked and arranged through the Elmer Area Ministerial Group. Presently, there are many small group gatherings, both at the church or at homes for weekly Bible study, Christ care groups for adults, young adults, seniors, youth and well-attended children's program called Awana. Of special mention is our programs to connect with children on Wednesday night. Young adults on Thursday, youth on Fridays, our youth ministry, our youth ministry leaders deserve a word of praise for the work they do to engage in the area youth collective. This initiative, or as they call it, a collective, brings youth together from across the region to share in building character and faith. I want to return to the Awana for a minute. They are meeting right now, and I wish we could go there and see what's going on. But every Wednesday on a, during the Awana gathering, there's about 65-plus kids that come in from all over town and the, and the county area. And then from the church, we have about 35 volunteer members as going leaders. They have games, music, and many other things. They have special guests also come in and share. Mayor and council, please know that we welcome and support you. In the recent past, our pastors have shared in the swearing-in, invocation ceremony of new council, the dedication of the new fire hall at John Street, and prayers at Remembrance Day, Sana Tath Semens services. We also pray for our electric officials on a regular basis. Please let your needs be known. So on April 27th, 25 days from now, at 10:30 through to a luncheon after, we are delighted to have confirmed that the mayor will be joining us that day. And there's a team led by cold, and our team for the anniversary celebration is Shar Arillo and Esther Wiley, who have toiled to ensure AEMC has a terrific time to reflect and rejoice in our 125th milestone here in the Elmer Mallehide area. During our 100th anniversary, we hosted approximately 100 guests, and we promise that we have done everything to ensure that the 125th is as equally suitable affair and God will be glorified. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson. Thank you very much for inviting me to help you celebrate on the 27th as well. I look for, any questions from council, Consulor Chapman?
It's just a comment. I'm glad to see that you're working so much with the youth, and we really need that in our community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have a resolution? No, we have a, did you?
That the delegation from Cam Thomas presenting regarding the Elmer Evangelical Missionary Church 125th anniversary be received for information.
Move in second, Consul Rye and Consul Oslach. All in favor? And that's Kerry, thank you. Item 512, Mr. Paul Cowley, regarding town criers, Mr. Cowley.
Mr. Mayor, staff, council members, thank you for hearing me out. I'm here specifically to explore the possibility of being appointed as the official town crier for the town of Elmer. I have a letter to that effect. I can read it now or simply leave it to be discussed or for you to explore during your What is your wish now?
Go ahead and read the letter, unless it's 20 pages or something.
Oh, no, 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 it's just a very short, two paragraph. I can leave it or you'll hear it. You'll hear it? The subject of this letter is to request the appointment as town crier for Elmer, Ontario. Dear Mr. Cowley, I hope this letter finds you well. I'm writing to express my sincere interest in being formally appointed as the town crier for the town of Elmer. As a passionate advocate for local history, tradition and civic engagement, I believe I'm well-suited to uphold the duties of this esteemed role and to serve our community with enthusiasm and dedication. The tradition of the town crier holds an important place in both local and global history, serving as the voice of the people, heralding events, celebrations and official announcements. I am eager to continue this tradition in Elmer by representing the township at community gatherings, promoting civic pride and preserving the honoured practice of the town crier. I would appreciate the opportunity to discuss this any further if necessary and to learn more about any official requirements or steps necessary to receive formal recognition. Additionally, if there are any municipal procedures or affiliations required, such as membership within the Ontario Guild of Town Criers, I would be happy to undertake them. Thank you for your time this evening and consideration. I look forward to your response and to the possibility of serving Elmer in this distinguished capacity. Regards, Paul Robert Cowley. And assuming that I am successful in being appointed, oh yea, oh yea, oh yea! Let it be known to all within the fine borders of Elmer in the township of Mallehide, within the grand county of Elgin in the province of Ontario, please heed this proclamation. By the grace of tradition and in honour of the noble duty of the town crier, I do hereby declare and appoint Paul Robert Cowley as the official town crier for this extremely proud town. Let his voice ring clear and true through the streets heralding news both joyous and urgent, summoning the people to hear the tidings of the day. From this moment forth, may he stand as the trusted bearer of proclamations, the keeper of community spirit and the voice of history yet to be written. God save the king! And of course, if I'm successful and am appointed by the town of Elmer, the whole notion of the traditional garb, pantaloons, frilly shirt, powdered wig, and of course, the bell, will come along. Thank you very much, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Crowley. Question from Consul Barber.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. When you mentioned earlier today that we'd get a demonstration, I'm very pleased that you weren't pulling my leg there, so, yeah, that's great to see. I just want to make a comment because I see your dedication to the town of Elmer whenever you are fully aware of what my role is in the town, and whenever I'm trying to problem-solve or help someone in whatever situation they're in, your name seems to pop up and we work really closely together a few times, so I know your dedication and I think you'd probably do an amazing job in this role, especially from that demonstration, so thanks, appreciate it, and you got my support.
Thank you for your comments.
Consul Chapman?
I totally, through your worship, I totally agree with William. Your dedication to our community is well-known, and I wish you good luck in the, becoming our town crier.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, worship. It was interesting to hear your opening address, and then you switched into overdrive, into the crier mode, and it took away that concern that I, I had, so, impressive show.
Consul Rahay?
I guess I have a comment and, and a question maybe to Andy. The, the comment is, I was gonna ask if you would do something so we could just make sure that you had what you need to do it. You got that? And then Andy, how, how do we proceed with this? Like, is this something that we talk about now, or is this, do we have to ask other people, or, or how do we kind of proceed with this? Thank you.
Yes, through the chair, to Consul Rahay. I did reach out to the, the Guild of Town Criers of Ontario, and so what Mr. Cowley requires is a, an endorsement of council, and then he can make an application to the Guild.
You have a phone, a follow-up, Consul Rahay? Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, do we do that now, or is this something that comes later? Like, do we endorse him today, or do we wait?
I think, I think the process, like, with any position that the town endorses, that we have to go through a process of advertisement of sorts, and then, then we would pick the person that enters the advertisements. That would be the process, basically. Consul Oslach?
I'm sorry about that, Mr. Oslach.
Yes, certainly, certainly, Mr. Cowley, I heard everything you said very clearly, which I'm not always able to, so that's very good. But, Consul de Rosier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So does the clerk require a motion to proceed with that, or is he able to take this discussion and move forward with a report to council, or?
Go ahead, Owen.
Through the chair, just council's clarification, you would like a process to have town criers apply to the town? Yep, we can proceed with that.
So we don't, you don't need a motion, you're just gonna proceed with going through the process of, of selecting a town crier? So we thank you very much for your presentation, that was really great.
My pleasure.
Fantastic. Right. Thank you for, so we have a resolution?
Yes. That the delegation from Mr. Paul Cowley regarding town criers be received for information.
Move in second, Consul Barber and Consul Oslach. All, all in favor? That's Kerry, thank you. And move on to 52 presentations, we have the Chief of Police, Kyle Johnstone, and I see he's brought Deputy Chief as well with him, but I believe, Kyle, you're doing the, the presentation, so if you approach the podium, please, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, sir, this, first of all, I'd like to, to thank council for inviting us to come present on this. Both the deputy and I candidly would not miss an opportunity to kind of highlight the work that actually goes on with our police service and that truly, truly happens in this town. I believe that there's a bit of a misnomer, that this is a bit of a sleepy town and perhaps a bit of a Mayberry when it comes to policing, and I can assure you that that is not the case, and in my three years here, it's, it's busiest that I've ever been in policing, and I know the deputy in his short time already echoes that to me as well, so, thank you for that opportunity. I won't belabor this, as it's been provided. I will touch on some highlights and some notables that I believe may be of interest to council going through, and then perhaps at the end, if there's any questions to circle back, I welcome council to certainly bring those forward to both the deputy and I. Pursuant to the new Community Safety and Policing Act, a strategic plan or a business plan is actually legislated for all police services within the province of Ontario, and that's exactly what this is. Not unlike the Police Service Act, which was the legislation that governed police services before this was enacted, this is something that's been happening for, for many years, so this is not new. However, we have taken some areas and really kind of expanded on some things and put some things in that may not have existed before, so. What I'll do, typical, there's a message from the chair, message from myself, and then just reiterating the mission, vision and values of the Elmer Police Service. Bit of a snapshot provided by some census data and through the wonderful help of Michelle Malucci, so thank you very much for that. She was also very instrumental in kind of putting this together for what you see. Notable here, this is comparative data, so what this comparative data reviews is other municipal standalone police services within the province of Ontario. Most notably, services of our size are more centered in the eastern part of Ontario, Ganonakwe and Hanover being basically twins of both our towns and also our policing structure and our staffing complement. You'll see there that, notably with them, we're significantly under them when it comes to an operating budget, and the reason you'll see Smith Falls, West Gray, Sawgeen and Port Hope, in succession, they are amongst the smallest of the comparative data here. So these are your smallest police services within the province, save and except Deep River. And if it's got deep and it's got river in it, you know it's gonna be far away. So those guys, they do their budgets a little bit differently, and I just spoke with their chief yesterday, and their 25 operating budget comes in at 1.9 million and they have eight officers. So even with that data, I think it shows we're operating in a fiscally responsible manner and able to deliver a policing service that I would argue and defend is second to none. The Crime Severity Index, which is pulled from UCR Stats, so Uniform Crime Reporting, which is based on all of the calls for service and the investigations and charges laid by police services, it's reported to Statistics Canada annually, and through a weighting, a weighting summary, which is based on the severity of the crime, and it's measured with jail time and sentences, so obviously your more serious offenses carry more jail time, you get a weighted clearance rate. So with that weighted clearance rate comes the Crime Severity Index, and at the time of this report, our 2024 data was not available, so we're operating on what we had available to us. But overall, we're trending in a very favorable direction, and I just approved the final review of our UCR data for 2024, so we'll have that made available through the board likely in May and then presented for public consumption shortly thereafter. Offense breakdown, very self-explanatory. We broke it down into total criminal charges laid, how many provincial charges laid, which includes your traffic tickets, your trespass tickets, your insurance offenses, liquor offenses, et cetera, Controlled Drugs and Substances Act charges, and notably prisoners processed, we had 136 people in custody in and out of our cell block throughout 2024. As undoubtedly all of council is aware, the Community Safety and Well-being Plan is something that we must take into account and we must consider when we're formulating the strategic plan. And we are currently undertaking a refresh and a new release of an updated Community Safety and Well-being Plan, which both the deputy and I are part of on behalf of the service, and I know the mayor is involved in as well, so we look forward to kind of expanding on that. And the provincial framework that kind of governs the community safety and well-being, some areas in some areas in which we need to touch on, which is the social development, prevention, risk intervention, and incident response, which this plan certainly does. The way in which this strategic plan was built, and again, this is the Board's plan. This isn't Kyle Johnstone's plan. This is the Elmer Police Services Board's plan. I was simply the conduit that kind of assisted with putting this together and advised the Board. So, the way in which we commenced this was through a survey, put out through many mechanisms on social media, through our website, through the town, all platforms that we had, we were putting this out on. In addition to that, we hosted a Coffee with a Cop open house at a couple of locations throughout the town, inviting people to come and speak with us about this. And on each one of those surveys, I put my contact information so that if anybody had a question about the survey, or if anybody had, just kind of needed some information that, you know, they wanted to use to formulate their responses, I was happy to do that. And in several circumstances, community members did reach out to me, just wanting some clarification on what certain things meant, and provided their feedback. In addition to that, we tasked our auxiliary team with going door-to-door to the downtown businesses and spread out as well on John Street, trying to basically go out to those people who are busy, the business owners, and put the survey in front of them and say, here it is, here's how you can do it. We've got tangible copies if you want to fill it out. You can also do it online through a Survey Monkey, but we really encourage you to do so. And through that, we had some respectable return rate on that. Overall, about a 1.4% return rate, considering the population of the town, which on the face of it seems rather low comparatively to other police services, it's actually kind of high. So, it's 2025. No one has time to take a survey. No one really wants to, you know, put something before you generally unless there's a problem. So, I think the mechanisms in which we kind of put ourselves out there to try and get this data was something that we were very passionate about. So, some significant findings from the community survey, and it's interesting and important to note that simultaneous to this, we were running an internal survey. So, this plan was not crafted simply on public feedback, but also through internal feedback through our officers. So, with the responses that we received, generally, some very good numbers. I mean, 89% of people who completed the survey felt safe in our community. I think that is a huge number. And again, comparatively with other communities and other towns, that number is exceptional. 85% of people thought it was very important for officers to be delivering safety messages and lesson plans in school, which I know has been a contentious issue with respect to school boards and a bigger issue than just Elmer. I am happy to say that all of the schools in Elmer have been extremely inviting, extremely welcoming, and throughout this whole review, they were exceptional to deal with and actually invited us in. And we, we took advantage of that, and we were reaping the rewards of that through the community. 92% of respondents, so that's almost everybody, thought that it was important for body-worn cameras to be used by Elmer Police Service officers. And that's something that's in full operational deployment currently and is going exceptionally well. Again, in the 80th percentile here, for respondents would expect very good service or good service if they reported a violent crime to the Elmer Police. And the satisfaction, very similar. So, the themes that were identified, and through the use of some algorithms and basically some AI, we were able to develop what the common themes were from all of the information that came into us through the reports. So, saved me a little bit of time going through tallying things where now we can put this in and we can, you know, really in real time determine what is important to people. So, the top five issues of Elmer residents were crimes against persons, property crime, impaired driving, domestic violence, and drug and substance abuse. Conversely, the areas of least concern were trouble with youth, fraud, mental health issues, school safety, and traffic issues. One of the most interesting themes that resulted from the survey and one that both the deputy and I are most proud of is the fact that local policing was identified as a standalone issue for those that responded to us. And they believed in community policing, which I think is a testament to the work that goes on by the Elmer Police. An increased requirement for cruiser and foot patrol at night was identified, and it's one of those things that both the deputy and I have data from all of our cruisers. They're on GPS. We get notifications to our phone if there's a speed threshold, if there's certain things that are going on. But with that data, we know how many miles are traveled at night, how much fuel we're burning, and this is one of those things, like a tree falling in the woods, in my opinion. So, our officers are certainly out there at night. They're finding open garage doors as a crime prevention mechanism, waking people up at four in the morning, telling them to shut their doors so their golf clubs are still there in the morning, and it's happening. So, the data certainly supports that we've shown an increase and continue to really make this a focal point for us. Social issues also, not a surprise arose as substance abuse, theft, speeding, homelessness, and mental health is a concern for many of those that responded on the survey, and an increased public visibility was something that they would like to see. This includes officers in schools and community events, and through our Police Service Board and the Chair and the deputy, one of our main priorities for 2025 is visibility. We are making a commitment to be at virtually every event that we have in the community and really put ourselves out there and be where the public is so that we can have that face-to-face interaction. Foot patrol and bike patrol, again, very much a priority for us moving forward. I know I've received several comments from members of the public, and so has the Police Service Board, that there's been a notable increase in foot patrol downtown, albeit the weather hasn't been great the last couple of months. But moving forward into the nicer weather, you're going to see many more officers on foot taking the time to basically be out there and visible. Respondents noted, basically, we're very complimentary of a seemingly increased social media presence, and that's something we're very cognizant of. We're trying to kind of get our messaging out a little bit sooner. We have some plans for the supervisors to go on media relations courses so that at two or three o'clock in the morning, that on-duty supervisor has access to all the media and can put things out in real time, instead of either waking up the deputy or waiting for us to come in in the morning so that we can really be where the people want us to be and have that message out. And again, school zones was the last one. As I mentioned, also running simultaneous was the internal staff consultation. And being a new chief, I can tell you, my peers said, these are the ones that hurt. And I can very proudly say that when I was done going through all of these, it was, I was pleasantly surprised. We had 50% return rate from our members, which totaled about seven, which was obviously better than the community survey, but less than we would have hoped. But in any event, we were happy for those that participated. Some of the trends that are found under the Significant Fines was with respect to communication internally, feeling supported within their role, satisfied with current training opportunities. But we're very live to the fact that 42% responded that they don't feel, they only feel they have adequate resources to perform their job, which means the vast majority feel that they do not. So, that's something that we've taken quite seriously. We've had some new equipment. We've had some things that we've rolled out that are really designed to kind of help the frontline officer, and that includes the body-worn camera, some data projects, and some things that are really starting to trend in the right direction. Common themes that were resulting from this, again, interestingly enough, very much mirrored some of the community comments with respect to mental health, crisis intervention, working with the schools, positive ticketing, and again, the officers full-on saying themselves that they want to be at an increased presence at the community events, which for us is very nice to hear because there's the sincerity behind it. They're not going because we're telling them to go. It's very clear that they want to go. So, that's excellent. Resources was another one that arose, and as you'll see in our strategic plan, there's a plan to improve the resources within the service in a fiscally responsible manner. And workplace culture, growth opportunities, and things, again, with respect to mental health were identified. So, from both the public consultation and the internal consultation, Board and I were able to kind of come up with some four main pillars as to how we're going to proceed with the 25 to 2028 strategic plan. The first one, quite an obvious one, visibility and community policing. They're one in the same. You can't have community policing without visibility, and you're not going to have visibility without community policing. So, with traffic safety and enforcement under this umbrella, we're going to leverage software and our data to analyze what we have before us to help prioritize areas for enforcement and intervention. And I can tell you already that we did that, harnessing some of the data that we've been taking from our collision stats. And the deputy put forth a traffic project that focused at Talbot and John last week, ran for two weeks, and we ended up with 18 intersection-related charges, all for proactive activity that goes directly back to the data telling us this is the spot, that's the problem. So, that's already going very well. We had excellent buy-in from the officers. An increase in presence of marked patrol cars in areas known to frequent traffic violations, and collaborate with the Town Operations Department to address recurring issues. And through Leah Hawley, we have been harnessing the data from a speed sign that we've been deploying. So, generally, we will take traffic complaints, and some of them are very meritous, and some of them are a perception issue. So, rather than us allocating the officers to a spot that it may not actually be a problem, and obviously with resources comes money, we're able to have that data given to us in a raw format from Leah that we can then make a determination of where we're going to put the officers and when. So, that's going quite well also. Enhancing crime investigation and accountability. Both of us come from a criminal investigations background, and we're very passionate about that. Community policing and frontline policing is the cornerstone of what everybody sees 99.9% of the time, but those complex criminal investigations that are sensitive and labor-intensive in nature require specialized services to really give it the proper attention and the proper response that it needs. And we're already moving in that direction with a standalone criminal investigations unit, which is only going to benefit the community. Drug abuse and homelessness, again, a theme that arose from both the public and our officers. For those who don't know, we have a very, a good partnership with Community Mental Health Association. We have what's called an MCert worker, so it's a mobile crisis response technician. She is very well-trained, and she's embedded with our service, depends, but one or two days a week. The other days of the week, she's with the Elgin OPP, and she's available for live callouts even when she's not with us, and conversely with the OPP. So, we have that resource Monday to Friday. We are going to look at expanding it. That person also takes a lot of follow-ups, where a lot of our calls, on the face of it, may be a domestic or maybe an impaired, but the underlying condition to it has a mental health component. The officers are doing an excellent job assigning a follow-up for her, providing the contact information, and offering that resource to those that we deal with. So, the follow-ups are the thing that we really see the most benefit on. The live calls are always nice, but the follow-ups and her navigating the system is really what the people in the town need, and it's going exceptionally well. Visibility, again, something both the deputy and I are very passionate on. We want foot patrol. We want bikes out. We want to be in the parks. We want to be where people either don't expect us or are appreciative of seeing us on a trail, or just downtown when people are out shopping, and that's where we're going with it this year. Ensure vehicles carry clear labeling and messaging to reinforce the supportive presence. We had an unmarked police vehicle that probably those who live in town got used to seeing. It was a bit of a subdued car. One of the first things we did based on this was we deckled that car up. So, we now have no unmarked cars, which there's a pro and a con as far as traffic enforcement, but we truly believe that the visibility and the police presence in the community certainly outweighs kind of the incognito traffic enforcement benefits. So, we've already moved forward on that. Community engagement and outreach, again, piggybacking on the Community Safety and Well-Being Plan, we're going, and this is already fully in operation, and I think you're starting to see a theme here. We don't sit and wait on things. We get things done. So, we've already partnered with Probation Services of St. Thomas, and they're working out of our office every Wednesday and Thursday. And what that has done is that's allowed people that are in eastern Elgin County and in Elmer to report to a probation officer instead of having to get to St. Thomas, because what we were finding through our data again, is that many failed to attend warrants were being issued by probation, and we were arresting the same people and bringing them into custody, and they would tell us every time, how do I get to St. Thomas? I don't have a license. I don't have a bike. It's not safe. So, this was a partnership that we pushed and approached probation with, and they were exceptionally on board with, and we're now fully in operation. So, the nice thing with this is on Wednesdays, when those people report for probation, our MCert technician is there as well. So, when people are done with probation, if there's a systems navigation issue or some assistance they need, Abby's there to help them and kind of pick up right where probation leaves off, and it's going very well. We want to work to strengthen our relationships with underrepresented populations in the community. One of the ones that comes to mind at the forefront is Mennonite Community Services. We've partnered with them. I've been in regular contact with Anna Bergen, who's fantastic. We're looking at putting together a newcomer program, which kind of introduces people in the area to the Elmer Police, explains the function of the police in Canada, and basically how we operate and why we do what we do, explain some domestic violence laws, some sexual violence laws, and just provide some literature that's available in more understandable terms. Second of that is communication. Again, we want to just be at the things that people are at. We want to be in the public and have that accessibility where the cruiser obviously prevents that, and so do being in the office. And really move forward with safety education programs. Again, the school's been excellent. We've done some prevention programs with respect to human trafficking, drug use. The deputy and I are also going to be talking with the Board of Work Staff for the spring coming up on how to deal with paraphernalia and how to handle it safely. And also to develop some tools for reporting non-emergency issues. We are exploring the possibility of an online reporting mechanism. To make a long story long here, we haven't landed on this yet because we still both very much believe in a no-call-too-small, we will come. But there are some people who don't want a cruiser showing up at their house, and they want to provide us that information. So, that's getting out to the public where they want us to be is kind of what we're exploring. And then, lastly, facilities, resources, and technology. I don't think it's any surprise to anyone in council, since our police station was opened in 1997, arguably, nothing was done. It was left in the way that it was opened, and we have been playing catch-up through the support of the Board. And what that's doing is ensuring our people have a respectable workplace to come into, and also for the public to come into. And it's one of those look-good, feel-good things. We have found through the investment in the station, just kind of making it a professional environment, this is the way that we expect our officers to be and to provide a professional product, and that's going exceptionally well. So, my thanks to the Board for that. We also have explored risk mitigation strategies for prisoners in custody. What we've done within the last couple of weeks is we have, through Elmer Glass Lexandin, so it's kind of fancy Plexiglas, Lexandin the cell bars so that there's no ligature points. So, there's no way for anybody to tie anything and to reduce the risk to those that are in custody that might be considering self-harm. We've also updated and improved the video surveillance within those cells so that the person in charge of monitoring the prisoners has a more clear picture and audio for what's going on, albeit they're sitting just down a room. But the officer in charge, and even Chris and I when we're in, were able to see that prisoner on our screen sitting in the cell. Through resources, we're currently preparing an end-of-life planning cycle for both our fleet and our equipment, because undoubtedly all of the things we have are only good for so long, like everything else, to kind of establish some better budgeting practices moving forward. And then, with technology, everybody knows technology is kind of driving everything these days. Body-worn cameras, a radio upgrade. We're exploring digital notes and in-car ticket printing and release document printing system. And, yeah, again, we're just pushing technology with our staff. Last one, organizational effectiveness. Training and development, again, based on some requirements that have come through the new, excuse me, Community Safety and Policing Act. This has really put a clear, a clear training requirement on police services in certain areas, particularly with respect to frontline patrol and criminal investigations. It's laid out exactly what courses we need to have. It's mandated, and how we respond to certain incidents, like an active attacker incident. With that comes training requirements, and with that comes equipment. So, we have been on the, the front of the curve on this. We've gotten ahead of it. We're in a good position. We have everything we need, save and accept a few last-minute things. But I'm happy to report we are well within compliance for the timelines that have been laid out by the Ontario Government for complying with this, and we are doing exceptionally well in that regard. Employee wellness. Employee wellness, something that is very important to both Chris and I. And again, through even some external surveys, it was interesting to note that many of the community were actually very thoughtful and very concerned about the officers' well-being. And developing a peer-to-peer program is something that is well underway with, it's been tasked to Steve Long and Amanda Ross, two of our officers that very much believe in mental health, and we've put that in their, on their capable plate, and they're in the process of telling us what, what needs to be done and how we're going to do it. So it's going very well. We're looking for opportunities, again, to promote fitness, and I think we're going to be having some good talks with the fire department on kind of how we can do that, because it's no secret, we have no fitness facility in our police station. We want our staff to be both physically and mentally well. We need to find a mechanism to ensure that that can happen. So through the fire chief, I think we're going to be able to come up with a partnership for that. And again, governance and accountability, I don't think it's any secret here, policing is undoubtedly the most scrutinized and overseen profession, and not for, not without good reason, and any good police officer will tell you, there's no problems with oversight. So we welcome it. With these challenges, though, obviously just come resources and reporting mechanisms and providing annual reports and providing notifications to the Inspectorate of Policing, but we're moving forward with that seamlessly. And the last one, recruiting and retention, both of which are very much a problem for police services, not just the Elmer Police, but every police service. I can also tell you, I was just on a course for the last two days, taught by two law enforcement officers from the United States, and these are their two issues as well. So it's not even just north of the border. So not only do we want to look, and I, I think anyone who's dealt with some of the police officers in the last little while, I think the recruiting speaks for itself. We have some exceptional talent, and we have some exceptional police officers in this town. Through attrition, we've lost some through retirement who were that first-name basis with everybody. And we have some mechanisms in place that we're going to be doing through social media to kind of introduce the newer members to the community, so we can get those officers on that first-name basis that used to live on with those that have retired. And again, we're just going to partnership, partnerships with some other community organizations that are going to help us with that. And again, social media is our friend. So, so much for that being a short synopsis, but that's kind of my presentation in a nutshell, save and accept any questions. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief Johnstone. Counsel, comments, questions? Counselor Disrosi there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank Chief Johnstone for presenting that to council. It was something that I specifically requested, and after being brought through your strategic plan, I would also say that it goes in line with your pillar one about visibility and pillar two about engagement as well. So thank you very much for taking the time and presenting to us.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, worship. A couple of questions to the chief. We presently have an officer seconded to the Ontario Police College. How does that benefit the Elmer Police Service? Secondly, you touched on the station upgrades. Anything that you wanted to add to that as far as the, the well-being of the officers and morale? And thirdly, can you touch on the enhanced diversity of the officers themselves as you move forward?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. So the first one, there's different schools of thought with the benefit of the officer at the Ontario Police College. The benefit is that that officer has a lateral opportunity to go somewhere and shape young minds and also receive some training that at some point they're going to bring back to our service. The operational, sorry, I'm going to say financial benefit, is that we recuperate all the salary, wages, benefits, every single employee-related cost of that employee, we recoup from the Ontario Government while they're seconded at OPC. The problem with that is, if we don't backfill that position operationally here, we're just down a person. And when we're down a person, that increases the overtime, that's more taxing on the shift that only has two people left. When one person's off, they're down to one, and that also drives up our part-time wage budget. So respectfully, in that sense, we're kind of robbing from Peter to pay Paul. So through the support of the board, we have moved forward with a plan that we're going to be replacing that person with a more junior person, which will still see that savings offset, and help us with our frontline operations, which is everything that this plan is striving to achieve. Sure, so again, through you, Mr. Mayor. My thanks to the board again, and I sincerely mean that it was, for lack of a better term, a very depressing building to walk into. My first couple of weeks, I asked myself, "What did I do?" But again, through some hard work from the members of our team and the board, we have completely revamped, simple things like carpet that hasn't been changed in thirty-some-odd years, that was just disgusting, we changed that. The lunchroom that was falling apart, that had doors that were hanging off and no counter space to even cut a bagel, we're replacing the kitchen. The washroom, and that was, is a whole other issue, but the washrooms were disgusting, they were disused. The men's washroom smelled of urine, and again, when we replaced the urinal, we found that there was problems with the pipe that had happened behind a wall that we didn't even know of. So these are really little things that cumulatively became a big thing. And we've had some very positive comments, excuse me, from the officers saying, like, "We actually were happy to come to work," and they're proud when they tell people that they're an Elmer Police Officer, and there's a little more pep in their step. And I'll be honest, I have it too. You have that pride in your organization, and when we have councillors in, we have members of the public in, I'll be blunt, it's, it's no longer embarrassing. So it, it's, it's good for the officers, and it's certainly good for the public. The last thing that we are hoping to achieve is a lobby expansion, and anybody that has been in our lobby knows it's the equivalent to a greenhouse. It's very, very warm in the summertime, there's no HVAC, and it's very, very cold in the wintertime. And the big thing that has bothered me since the day I got there, and I know Chris echoes this too, in community policing, when you walk into a police station, you need to see a face, not a phone. And that's what we want to have. We want to have that front, first-contact approach, when somebody's coming in on their worst day, that they see a friendly face, and we can go from there and get them the help they need and speak with the police officer. We have a park bench as our, as our seat in the lobby right now, and it is very small. We've had instances where people have come in on a road rage incident, both obviously fired up and upset with each other, they are in a confined space, which isn't ideal, one's trying to pick up the phone to call dispatch, the other one's yelling at them. But then other things like domestic issues, same thing. We've got people who are coming in, family disputes, and they are just on top of each other, and it's, it's not a good first contact. And we have submitted a grant, hoping to recover the costs that we anticipate this is going to cost. We're still waiting to hear back on that. We're very hopeful that this is going to be something that we can get through the provincial government. But my, the way I equate it, and I've said this to a couple of people, you can go into a doctor's office, and they can be the best doctor in the world, but if you're sitting in the waiting room, and it's deplorable or unprofessional, no matter how good that physician is, you've lost your faith before you even walk in the door. And that's what I fear is happening when we have great officers on the other side of the door, but that first contact and that waiting for the five minutes just loses some of that faith in our people. So that's something we're really going to push back and hopefully be able to offer to the public. And through the board, we are going to prepare an update with the renovations and a status report, and a budget with where we're sitting at the May board meeting, when we have some pictures and things are a little more complete. And lastly, you said...
Diversity of the officers.
So the diversity of the officers is something that we've really taken seriously. One of the benefits we have with our police service is that we have an auxiliary program. Many other police services don't have an auxiliary program, but what this does is this gives people, and you get, you get two streams. You get people who really want to be police officers and want to use it as a stepping stone, and you get some very well-intended community members that really want to help and kind of bridge that gap and don't want to be police officers, but want to come to the events and really, you know, bridge that connection. And we've got three members, which I'm very proud to say are all from the Low German-Mennonite culture, and have really moved mountains for us, as far as our credibility and as far as being able to connect with people that we were kind of struggling to connect with. Language barriers, and something as simple as other community members seeing two of our female Low German-Mennonite auxiliary officers, the things that they've told me about how they've inspired other people in that culture to kind of want to push the boundaries and get into policing and explore things. The benefit is actually, it's exponential, and I think a lot more under, under what we fully understand, but it's going very well. So we're also going to take that, and we're going to build upon a partnership with MCS and through our auxiliaries to have kind of a spoken video on how to get through the record checks and how you can do that, because as most know, Low German is more of a spoken dialect than it is written. So we can't really give people pamphlets and say, "This is how it's going to work." But we are going to release our new website here very shortly, that's going to have one of our auxiliary members speaking in Low German with a tutorial of how people can get through what they need to get through. So yeah, that's, that's where we're at with that right now. And then lastly, we are running a recruiting process here that we're in the near completion stage of, and we are increasing our female compliments significantly. We've hired Constable Amanda Ross, we've hired Constable Rebecca Chalice, and undoubtedly, we're probably going to be bringing on one or two more here, with our idea is that each platoon of three is going to have a female officer on every shift, so.
Counselor Disrosi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to pivot off of that diversity question that Deputy Mayor Barber presented, I think it's great that we have members, auxiliary members that are Low German. I also think it's amazing that we have a desire for more female officers as well. However, I, I don't know, I've noticed myself here in this community that as our community has grown, so has the diversity. So we have a lot of Middle Eastern, we have African-American, we also have Indigenous, we have, you know, several other members in diverse communities here. So is any characteristics for diverse recruitment being considered for those other demographics?
Sure, through you, Mr. Mayor. Excellent question. So the OACP, which is the Ontario Association of Chiefs of Police, and the PAO, which is the Police Association of Ontario, have partnered up to kind of push recruiting collectively. We were working in silos before, but now the management side and the union side are working together to market policing as more of a, an appealing profession, because these issues are not an Elmer issue, they're an everywhere issue. And recruiting is down for multitude of reasons, which is a whole separate meeting, but we are really trying to kind of advertise it and encourage people to apply. One of the things that we did, the deputy and I made a decision here, unpopular for many other police services, is we removed the OACP certificate requirement for people applying for cadet. Reason being, exactly that. We wanted to kind of open the borders a little bit, and it's not cheap, it's three hundred dollars, it's an exam, it takes time, and we found we had over fifty applicants for cadet, which almost quadrupled some of our larger peers. So that's something that's worked very well for us, I think we're going to continue with that. And then lastly, you know, we, and I'm a firm believer on the right person coming at the right time. So if you have quality, professional, competent police officers coming on your worst day, that is the most important thing to you. And that's where we're at. We certainly welcome diversity, we want diversity, we want inclusion, we want to make our service more appealing to those other groups. But at the end of the day, save and accept these recruiting campaigns we're going on, we can't force people to apply. And, you know, the standard for policing Ontario, it, it's high, as it should be, I think we all recognize that. But there's some, there's some backend things that are certainly happening to kind of push that and hopefully make it better, not just for Elmer, but for policing in general.
Right, thank you very much for that tremendous report. I guess under team, one more question.
It'll be a quick one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thanks for coming and, and doing the presentation. It means a lot more to, to me, hearing your strategic plan than me just kind of reading through it, and it's nice to kind of feel the enthusiasm that you get, rather than me just, you know, fumbling through it. So thanks for doing that, and it was, it was nice to have you guys come up, so, thanks.
Yes, certainly. Very good. We have a resolution.
That the report of the chief of police regarding the 2025 to 2028 strategic plan be received for information.
Mover in seconder, Counselor Chapman and Counselor Barber. All those in favor? And Kerry, thank you. Again, thank you very much, chief. Consent agenda, item six.
That the April 2nd, 2025 consent agenda be received for information, and that the staff report, there are no staff reports, and that council approves the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on March 19th, 2025.
Right. Mover in seconder, Deputy Mayor Barber, Counselor Chapman. Any discussion, comment on any of those items? Seeing none, all those in favor? Yes, Kerry, thank you. Item seven, one, annual investment report resolution.
That report, that report finance zero-six dash twenty-five, entitled Annual Investment Report 2025, be received for information.
Mover in seconder, Counselor Chapman and Counselor Disrosi, and Heather, give them a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you and to members of council, staff found it necessary to give an interim update on the investments while we await the earth financial statements. The earth financial statement should be out in the next month, where we would possibly see a dividend declared for 2024. So currently, the interest income received on the investment and interest income on the revenue bank accounts are included in this report. The appendices to this report are fairly comprehensive, but to summarize for the town, it's generated investment income in the form of interest income, net of market changes from the reserve bank accounts as follows. So as councils aware, they have an investment with Prudential Investor through the One Jib. This generated a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of interest income for 2024. We have a CIBC High Interest Savings Account, generated twenty-eight hundred dollars. Reserve Bank Accounts interest, generated a million-dollar interest income. We have trust LOC accounts that generated fifty-eight thousand dollars worth of interest income, and the town operating account, a hundred and seventy-six thousand. So the summary of the two investments that we have that are managed by the One Jib was thirty-five thousand opening balance for the CIBC High Interest Savings, closing balance being thirty-eight thousand. The One Jib Prudential Investor Fund, that was new for council in 2023, opening balance was one point five eight nine million, closing balance was one point seven seven four million, generating an overall rate of return for eleven point six percent. I just went to an investment meeting with the PH&amp;N RBC investors yesterday, and they would be willing to come in September and do a delegation so that council can answer any, or ask and have any questions answered on the investment. So that's, that's all I had, other than the appendices in this report, so I'll try to answer any questions council may have.
Seeing none, all those in favor? Yes, Kerry, thank you, Heather. CAO report on revised fleet and equipment policy, resolution?
That report, CAO nineteen dash twenty-five, respecting revised fleet and equipment policy, we received this information, and that the revised fleet policy and equipment policy be approved and adopted by council.
Mover in seconder, Deputy Mayor Barber and Counselor Ozlach. Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before council is an update to the fleet and equipment policy, the shift that we're looking to make in this policy is to allow for increased assessments prior to automatic replacement of fleet or equipment. Generally, following set life cycles is the best practice in terms of fiscally responsible management of fleet and equipment, so you avoid the increased cost of maintenance for keeping something on the road or in the shop. We're, however, entering a period of market uncertainty, certainly with tariffs, that it might be more desirable to try to extend the lifecycle of some equipment or fleet when possible. The only one issue that we see with the revised policies at town may need to go in the other direction with our large dump truck or... with our large dump truck or plow. The town had a life cycle on these that was significantly longer than most area municipalities. And right now, we're already seeing this reflected in the increased maintenance costs. So, so that's the only one where we're suggesting that the review start now for replacement to make sure that we avoid increased maintenance cost. Aside from some added that, there's some added flexibility for extending life cycles, looking to standardize purchases to assist with having parts that could be transferred or interchangeable. Also, we're looking to allow exclusions from the procurement policy to allow for the purchase of used equipments or fleet when that might be feasible or create a savings. The policy also introduces the potential to review energy efficient equipment or fleet, which is, may become more important in the future, but it's important to advance our environmental stewardship. So with that, I'll, I'll try to answer any questions of council.
Counsel. Counselor Rohy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to Andy. This is kind of what I, I like doing. I like this stuff. So I like, I did go through it pretty good and it all makes pretty good sense to me. If you can extend something, just because it's old doesn't mean that it always needs to be replaced. I'm sure what you'll be getting into with something like the five or 10-ton trucks is some of the new emission stuff just doesn't last as long. You could have a truck that was 20, 20 years old or 30 years old. And they brought in emission stuff in 2007 that made it quite strict and, and that stuff doesn't last. And so it's nice to see that someone is kind of paying attention to what we have going on and, and kind of keeping their thumb on it. So thank you.
Counselor Barber.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. To Andy, it looks like a lot of work went into this, which I thank you for. Just, I want clarification on one thing because I was going through, just making sure I didn't miss it. But it looks like you have a plan for majority of all of the, or majority of the fleet. But when it comes to fire vehicles, I know it's a little bit different. So we're going strictly by NFPA standards when it comes to replacing fire vehicles. Is that correct? Or first, first responding fire apparatus.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There's a very good question. I, I think there's a lot of municipalities right now kind of having that discussion at their council tables about the challenges with NFPA. Certainly, there's requirements for the, the first line emergency response that, that we definitely have to make. I think the, the one thing that we're, we're trying to avoid is taking something that we could potentially refurbish or upgrade to meet the new standards and extending the life cycle. But that's certainly something that we would have to sit down and talk with the fire chief about and, and work through any issues that they might have. But we're going to certainly make sure that we meet, meet any statutory requirements with our emergency response vehicles.
Follow-up, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Andy, who? And not sure if you can answer this now, but just a question for me. Who would, or how would you define a first responding fire apparatus? Because depending on the page, each truck responds at different times, but all trucks usually respond for emergencies. So what I'm thinking about, all of the vehicles that we currently have, from my understanding, all of them would be frontline, our first responding fire, fire apparatus because they all go out for all calls. So just wanting some clarification on that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, certainly, that's something I'd want to talk to the, the fire chief a bit more about and sit down and have that, that kind of discussion to make sure we're on the, the same page with that. I mean, I think there's some vehicles, like, like a command vehicle, that likely isn't a, a first responder. But there certainly are other ones that, that do go out. And I don't, we don't want to do, certainly, we're in a good position that we have the new pumper truck. But we want to make sure that we, we don't get in a situation where we have to rely on mutual aid or put vehicles in reserve.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify as well. I know that there's been discussion about the, the pickup truck recently, but I just, I just wanted to add that we are, we do have a foam trailer now, which has helped out at many fires. Well, Tilsenberg was one of the biggest ones, which would potentially turn that into a first responding fire apparatus because it toes our foam trailer. So, and that's just a benefit that Elmer has is having that available. And I've personally delivered foam to St. Thomas Fire when they've been battling fires. So that's, that's something that we should be proud of having. But thank you for that clarification.
Okay. Motion on the table, all those in favor? And Kerry, thank you. Item 7.3, CAO procedural bylaw amendment. We have a resolution.
That report CAO 20-25, respecting the procedural bylaw amendment be received for information and that council approve the proposed amendment to the procedural bylaw to be advanced for consideration at a future meeting of council.
Mover in seconder, Counselor Chapman, Counselor Barber. Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So before council is a procedural bylaw amendment, the intent of this amendment is not to in any way limit or hinder debate. It's simply to better distinguish between staff's presentation and answering of council's questions and council's deliberation and debate of the subject. It would work similar to how we handle our planning meetings. So after staff finish a report, council asks questions of clarify, to clarify their understanding. And then council debates the merits of the recommendations and how they would like to proceed on the topic. So staff generally would not participate in this last section unless there's some request specifically from council for our assistance. This is a common process that's used in municipalities and it's how debate worked in the last two municipalities I worked in. The benefit of the recommended approach is that it limits the potential for staff to be seen entering the debate with council. Staff have an obligation, obviously, to provide professional advice and recommendations to council. But once that is, that obligation's fulfilled, we like to be impartial on what council decides. So the proposed change in process really doesn't alter the ability of council to, to debate. More than anything, it identifies when staff's role is to, you know, sit silently and respectfully and watch council debate and decide a matter. So if anything, it limits staff. And that's what, what we're looking to advance. With that, I'll try to answer any questions of council.
Questions from council. Counselor DeSrozy and then Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just clarification then. So regardless of this procedural amendment, if we are, I, I know there's been several times with myself that perhaps we've asked questions and then debate has proceeded. And a member of the council, a member of council will, will make a suggestion or say something that I then require clarification on or need assistance from, from staff. So with this amendment, is that no longer available then? Or how does that work? Can you please clarify?
Well, I can clarify that. Counselor DeSrozy, it would be up to the chair to decide whether that question is, you know, leading to debate with, with staff or as a clarification. So yes, it is possible, this is your answer. It's possible to, you know, to ask questions for clarification that come up suddenly during council debate. Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you. Just to clarify, it was mentioned in Andy's summary, there is nothing in this proposal that would limit the ability to, for any council members to debate or discuss an issue on a particular matter. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct. It just better distinguishes when, when questions are being asked and when council debates occur.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor DeSrozy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification purposes, through you, the chair. What other municipalities have a similar policy? I believe the, the CAO mentioned that there's other municipalities he's worked at have similar policies. So what are those municipalities?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I haven't done an extensive list. This was a process used for the city of Hamilton. Norfolk County also uses this. I think it sometimes isn't directly written into the procedural bylaw. Sometimes it's the discretion of the chair to, to run the meeting like this. But we thought if we were doing a change like this, it'd be important to bring it before council and actually put it in the procedural bylaw. But we didn't do a full analysis of, of all municipalities.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's all right.
Just one final question. Just to ensure that I had a little bit of a concern that this policy change might contradict the municipal act. Do we need to seek any type of legal advice and defer this prior to that? Or is staff confident that this does not contradict the municipal act?
Well, I can answer some of that. I did, I did look at the municipal act. And initially, as you mentioned, you know, some concerns with, with this in, in case it, it is seen as, you know, cutting debate. And I didn't find anything in the municipal act that would address this as being inappropriate. I looked at the procedural bylaws for Malahide Township and for Central Elgin. And although they don't specifically deal with how and when council engages with staff, there are parts of the, of the procedural bylaw which dealt with inappropriate questions and that kind of thing. But I would, you know, as I said, I had some concerns. And I think that what we're doing here basically, I think, is, is, really, it's, it's a housekeeping kind of thing. And just so that there is something in the procedural bylaw that makes it clear to council and staff what their roles are in terms of debate. So, you know, I would, I would support it. Any other questions? Fair, okay. Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? And Kerry, thank you. And we do new business matters of urgency. Reading of bylaws and proceedings, zero.
That council gives three readings to and approves bylaw 24-25 being a bylaw to adopt the estimate of the sums required for the town of Elmer for the year 2025 to strike the rates of taxation for the same. Bylaw 25-25 being a bylaw to amend bylaw 57-19 being a bylaw to define the Corporation of the Town of Elmer's policy for commissioner for taking affidavits. Bylaw 26-25 being a bylaw to amend bylaw 68-21 being a bylaw to establish fees and charges for the Corporation of the Town of Elmer. And bylaw 27-25 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council held at the regular meeting on March 19th, 2025.
Mover in seconder, Counselor Chapman and Counselor Ozlach. Any questions or comments in any of those? Seeing none, all those in favor? And it is Kerry, thank you. Inquiries by members? Statements and committee reports by members? Counselor DeSrozy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a second to thank all the incredible women who attended the Elgin Women's Leadership Conference on Saturday at the Castle Station. This event brought together leaders from across our community to share their experiences, insights and expertise. We were honored to welcome Indra Nidhu Harris, former Ontario Minister of the Status of Women and Minister of Education as our keynote speaker. A heartfelt thank you to our sponsors, partners and the dedicated planning team who made this event possible. It was a great opportunity to celebrate and connect with the remarkable women in Elgin County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Report to the mayor. I. Oh, you have another comment? Sorry. Counselor Barber.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank you for recognizing raising awareness about World Autism Day. I apologize, I wasn't able to attend. As many of you know, my job outside of this is supporting people with many diagnoses and, and needs, including autism. So my work didn't allow me to attend. But I just wanted to thank you for raising awareness because it is a very important, a very important subject and, and more awareness and support needs to be in place, not only for autism, but many different diagnosis and struggles that families and people supported are going through. So thank you again.
You're quite welcome. Counselor DeSrozy was part of the audience today. And I have been working with autism, autism spectrum disorder when I was in my former job. And I, I still learned a bit looking at this that, you know, one out of every 50 youth in Ontario, actually in Canada, have been diagnosed as ASD. So that was quite a surprise. And so we, we managed to raise the flag in council chambers because it was sleeting outside. Thank you. Anyone else? Report to the mayor. I don't have reporting except that. I do wanted to mention, I did send the, an email around to all counselors that next Monday night at 7 o'clock, there is a, a forum, or panel discussion, I'm not sure what the right word is, concerning the library. And that I will be taking part as part of the panel.